Thanks for coming, everybody. We're going to start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the agenda, any additions, revisions, and corrections this time. Dwayne asked to add under F1, old business, he's going to give a report on the fire department banquet this Saturday. And Dan asked to add D2 under new business. He attended the People's Energy Co-op meeting, just wanted to give us an update on the People's Energy Co-op. Anything else? Teresa?
No.
Dan?
No.
Mike?
Nope.
Nope? I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So we'll...
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. On the consent agenda, everything was in your packet? There's no questions for the administrator. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thanks, Mel. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I should say before I start, Lonny is absent tonight. He was not feeling well, so he is staying home to not affect the rest of us.
So nice.
We don't have any visitors. On the old business, F1, report on the fire department. Thank you, Dwayne.
Mel and I, Linda and Teresa were all in attendance. Actually, I felt it was a privilege to attend. It was a very nice event. Well done. Our firemen, I don't know if it's a new uniform or new covers, but they look quite professional. I wanted to draw attention to the fact they recognized four key individuals for awards. Chris Hue got EMS responder of the year. Cody Miller, the fire responder of the year. Lindsay Derby, the community service member. And firefighter of the year went to Curtis Alexander. They promoted from probationary status eight firemen. And they recognized four firemen for at least five years of service. And our chief, Joe Fitch, for his 15 years of service. Again, it was a very nice event, and I look forward to the second annual next year.
Thank you. On the new business, number one, the attorney contracts. That is in your packet. It's pretty much the identical contract that we had the previous year.
And the year before that.
For that. Dwayne did have one comment or a question.
Yeah, in regards to the contract, under the very last paragraph regarding outside counsel, I just wonder if our attorney is going to solicit outside counsel or recommend outside counsel that at least come through for this board review and approval. So we at least have the opportunity to stamp, you know, that rather than... And just to have that language. You know, I trust Melanie all the way, but I think it would be good just to have that added language into the contract.
Any objections from anybody? So it should be...
I'll bring it back next time.
Okay, right. So we'll take action next time.
Dwayne, if I might though, it does say, provided nevertheless, the city shall consult with the attorney with regard to hiring independent counsel. If that, that's not sufficient in your mind?
Didn't we... Well, it says shall consult, but I'm thinking that maybe we want to approve.
Okay.
Didn't we end up asking, Chris, when we hired someone like a mediator? I mean, that wasn't outside. That was...
Right, it was recommended by Melanie. We chose the counsel for negotiations.
Yeah.
But we'll just clear it up.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Number two, under new business, People's Energy Co-op. Yeah?
I was at a... I'm on a board for People's Energy Co-op. I was at one of their meetings recently. And they were looking at changing, they haven't voted on it yet or nothing, but they're looking at changing their rate for their meter cost to cover all their fixed costs. Right now, they've been charging $37 a month, but then they, part of their kilowatt hours pays for the rest of it. They want to change it to where it's one flat B for the meter and then lower their kilowatt hours. So they're still making the same money, they just want to change how they do it. So they're looking at doing it, so I just wanted to put that heads up. Because they're looking at changing it to $52 a month. So there'll be some residents in Carson that are affected by it.
Thanks, Dan. Mayor's report. The only thing I have there is, I did have a chance to attend the Chamber Annual Meeting last Thursday, and I gave a little bit of a report that went on for the year 2018. The administrator asked me to put those, or get her the copy of my notes. I'm still trying to get those typed up to where somebody can actually read them, so I'll get you that so we can get that over in a second.
Okay, okay.
But that was a good meeting.
It was a great state of the city report.
I'll get it in writing, I promise. Administrator's report.
So a note that the hidden property is for sale. If that gets something that the council would like to have some more conversation around, we can have a closed session with your attorney at your next meeting. I'm just looking for some direction if that's a conversation that you'd like to plan for.
As far as the city being interested in possibly purchasing part of that, or...
Exactly. In 2012, I did find that the city had a survey done in regards to some potential park land use of that property. So it's been on the city's radar before. It happens to be on the market right now. So if you're interested...
Be quiet to clean out.
We could at least have a conversation with the attorney if you want to do that at your next meeting.
I can't hear the conversation, but I agree. I agree. Especially if it's about 2012, and maybe if there was something you can bring us up to speed in 2012, what they're looking at.
I'll show you what I see.
I suspect it was...
Fire room was that shed there, that Bert wanted to use that for storing lawnmowers against guys that fire on top.
Okay, okay. So somebody might have been resolved already.
And we do mow the...
This part here.
Between that creek and the back of the hardware store. Because that land, as I understand it from Ronnie, was improved in anticipation of a purchase. And Ron just can't stand to watch it go bad, so we...
Okay, all right. It'd be worth having a conversation.
Love conversations.
Okay, thank you.
On electric utility territory, there are some homes in Blaine's 12th Edition that are within the city limits, but not within the city's electric territory. And there, the General Dollar Store is both within the city limits and the city's electric territory currently served by XL Energy. I'm starting with that conversation with XL. Included in your packet, some areas that are within our orderly annexation agreement and outside of our territory that we might want to look at acquiring sooner than later. XL has not opened, has not been open to the conversation about anything that's not currently within our boundaries. But that doesn't mean I won't pursue it next.
So the Dollar Store, did you talk to Todd about that? Because when that first went in, we had talked about doing it then, but the cost wasn't feasible at the time for what they wanted for transformers.
You mean to acquire the property?
Well, no, to take over the electric... Yep, so it's something, there was something to do with the cost. Was it feasible for the city at the time?
Yes, so without giving up too much of my conversation with our attorney who handles our electric, hopefully we'll remind them that they're serving a customer who was within our territory, within our city.
Okay.
We'll keep that in mind and have that conversation.
I just remembered that, so I just wanted to bring it in.
Yeah, thank you. So this is the future, as far as how to pay for the territory. Compass, our electric group, was an investor in a small utilities service company. The company bought back the shares that Compass held. We're looking at about $160,000 that would be coming to the city. That could be money that we could earmark for future territory acquisition as well. Water truck sale. So we have a piece of junk, but we haven't been able to get to the junkyard. And in the meantime, somebody spotted it. So they approached Charlie and are offering $1,000 for the water truck, which is more than its scrap value, I think. Do you have anything else you want to weigh in?
It's been set there for...
You want to get it out of your way?
Yeah, six plus years and...
It's going to use it in six years.
It hadn't ran for... No, we couldn't get a DOT. It's never been DOTed. It's got split rims and they wanted $8,000 or something to put in the rims and tires on it. And we didn't get a DOT, so it's just sat there. We did get it running, but their brakes are locked up.
I'd like a win win to us. They come picking it up and give us a thousand dollars?
Okay, so a motion would be awesome.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the sale of the water truck.
I'll second that.
Second. Any further discussion?
As is, where is?
Yeah, well, we're good. We'll have the attorney put some wording together.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, Linda. Thank you.
This came up at our department head meeting. So our electric department purchased a phasing tool so that they would know what we were drawing or using up as transformers throughout the city. They'll be wrapping up that work, but we had a tool that cost about $5,000. Todd is going to start with MMUA and Compass and some of the other utilities within SEMLM to see if it's something that we could rent to them either by the day or for the project and maybe recover some of our initial costs on that. And we'll bring you up to see if we have a better idea about how to work out those details.
I suggested that we could possibly bring it up at our conference that we attend next week to cities who may be interested in doing their mapping too and to be able to phase it so that they can rent it out or something.
Looking into that. And then kind of ahead of, the liquor store 70th anniversary is this year. Actually, the anniversary would be in December, but Kathy would like to plan something maybe for October. Just keep that in mind and hopefully we'll pin down a date as the time gets closer.
Okay, thanks, Teresa.
You're welcome.
On to Brandon, engineer's report.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. A few things on the agenda tonight. Number one is our proposed 2018 fee schedule. This fee schedule is for our kind of master service grant that we have existing with the city. This is for miscellaneous on-call work, either small work that we have to do within the city or private services that come into the town. We don't charge any mileage, no equipment, miscellaneous fees there. We also attend meetings for free. That's not a charge that we charge the city. That's again based on our existing agreement in place. Larger projects, we bring forward a separate engineering agreement so we can really scope down on the true cost before we just all of a sudden get a large bill on a project. So again, this is for miscellaneous on-call work and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you know what the difference is from last year?
It's about three to four percent, probably increased across the board depending on what kind of category of work it would be.
Thank you very much. Do you need to approve that?
Yes.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, Linda.
All right, and the second item there is the stormwater management. This kind of is on the council agenda, based on a discussion I understand happened at the planning commission, specifically with the proposed Marty development, and the developer is here tonight. So we just kind of wanted to talk it through and get some direction from the council on kind of how we deal with stormwater management. I think really the discussion is hand is, especially with this development, ultimately needs some stormwater management on a downstream adjacent property. It's kind of the way the land works, et cetera. So staff, past, past, past practice from staff has been kind of put in the developer's hands. Developer, you go talk to the adjacent property owner. You figure it out. Let us know when you got it figured out. Get the drainage movements in place, kind of cut the deals, et cetera. That can be, obviously, it's pretty, sometimes difficult for developers. So they're kind of looking for, city to kind of maybe get more involved in help facilitating, facilitating the discussion. So now, kind of what does that mean is maybe something we need to discuss. Specifically, kind of what's the target to hit? Where are these ponds going to go? So one of the things that we've talked about, or has actually been in the comp plan, was a stormwater master plan, and that would ultimately kind of look at the lay of land, look at the future urban growth, and start putting dots on the map to say, all right, here's a stormwater pond. This is what the city needs to facilitate. This is what the developers need to work around, et cetera. So it's maybe one consideration discussion we need to have, again, put that target on the map so we know where these ponds are going to go. So then, of course, it's easy to put stuff on a map. How do we pay for it? Again, every development is probably different based on the lay of land, and we kind of have some different options here, different kind of discussion items. Number one, if development is big enough and the lay of land fits the development where maybe the discharge point of the pond will ultimately be on their property, then it's kind of easy, you know, they build the pond themselves, likely at their cost, and then meet the city requirements, and then kind of we're off and running. We don't need any participation from adjacent property owners. The other thing we can do is, within the city ordinance, there is, there is development fees in there. What ultimately says fee for construction, regional stormwater ponds in newly developing areas can be basically built by the city and charged back to the developer. I don't think the city's necessarily been practicing that, is my understanding. But it isn't within your ordinance. Now, what does that mean? Again, it becomes very difficult to figure out where we want to build these ponds. Now, the city's building ponds, city's carrying obviously a lot of cost. We're chasing down developers. So that's something that we necessarily haven't been doing. And obviously, developers want things kind of turned keys, so it's been maybe a little bit of frustration on their part. So if that's a direction that you want, city staff to get more involved, then obviously we can start facilitating more of that discussion. So I think for specifically this development, I'd talk again to the developer and the developer's attorney, engineering that are here tonight. I think the best course of action is talk to the downstream property owner. The engineering firm that they're working with also has been working with that gentleman. And sit down and see, if we can get some pen to paper here and see if the pond can ultimately go on that adjacent property. And then we can have a discussion on if the city's involved or if we leave it as a private manager. Is, is kind of what I'm recommending as moving forward here. That may change if that developers, or both developers, want the city to get involved in this specific project where maybe the city does come in and builds that pond and incur some cost, has the first developers ready to build tomorrow and has a plenary plan submitted to the city to pay for that portion of their pond, and then maybe the city rides out the other sizing of the pond for the other future development, and we work something through at that point. So that's kind of my opinion on it. It's a tough item to work through because the lay of land usually doesn't follow property lines. It can be quite problematic. Most developers obviously want to build lots, and ponds are more of a hindrance on, on the land and a cost that is, you know, drives up the cost of development. So no easy discussion, and again, open up to discussion or providing city staff different direction, obviously. That's our job to carry out your direction, so. But we haven't kind of hands-off and haven't been building regional ponds. Obviously, they're going to be costly, but that's something we can look at if you, if you would like us to look at it more on what sort of cost verification and really getting involved in building these ponds would be, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, the other component with that is that where we're thinking the pond would go, it's not in the city limits currently.
Yeah, potentially.
So it's, would require an annexation process too.
And we could work out some development agreement. The city retains some land, et cetera. All things we could work out. And again, the developers here, I don't care if you want to hear their side of the story, if you will, obviously may help us get some direction. Sure.
You can fill out the information again.
Rich Massey.
Oh, Rich.
So anyway, I think you'll need some ponding for that 16th Street project also in that same area, is that right?
Potentially, again, though we got city projects and a pond, it may get a city benefit.
Then that might probably take care of the annexation stuff then too, maybe kind of sort of...
Yeah, we would be likely.
I don't know. So I mean, but, you know, Mike has been talking to Dean Chutey some, so. So far, he seems agreeable to working this out or anything, so. Just if it gets to be, if things go solid, agreements. And that's why we refer to have the city help facilitate it, you know, because you have the ability to assess stuff and you go on. But we try to do it the other way first, I guess.
That's what I, yeah, I'd see if we can arrange a practice. We've got other folks that would love us to build.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
And we start building ponds, and all of a sudden, we do one, we have to do the rest of them.
Yeah.
That's going to get...
Well, we're kind of, we're running into it in different parts of town where the pond is the next thing we need.
Sure.
So we need a little assistance, I guess.
Okay.
However, go ahead, David.
One thing that would be beneficial too, as Brandon said, a dot on the map. And maybe the city considering, starting to maybe secure property for ponds, not, you know, at least as a first step, you know, that we have a place to go.
The master plan.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I think that's a discussion to get at. I believe we, in this specific case, we have developer working with both property owners. It kind of works out well in that situation. So I think they're open to sitting in the room and we'll start at least having the conversation. If we have participation, then we'll work out and bring back counsel in the direction or any questions that we may need or provide a similar direction. Just as a big picture, there is, you mentioned another kind of drainage area outside of town that is actually holding up development. That's something I think we always, obviously, got to be conscious of, that this town is growing. And we've kind of put that requirement on and put the pond in the right place, but we don't have a participating property owner, so we are holding up development. I think we'd see some more development there if that was not the case. So it's a little bit of a give and take and push and pull, so. Yeah, we'll see how this one goes and go from there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Moving on to number three then. We have TH57 partnership agreement. There's an agreement between the City of Carson and MinDOT. I think this is the third agreement that we'll have with this project. It should look pretty, pretty similar to an engineering agreement that we've passed between the city and WHKS to actually complete this work. So this partnership agreement is for that engineering services. That basically says the city is going to be responsible for the engineering work. The city is going to incur the cost of the engineering work during the design process. And then we're going to give the final construction plans to MinDOT. MinDOT is going to take those construction plans and build the project during 2021 as we're currently scheduled on. And that's consistent with the cost estimates that we've had previously. So this kind of falls in line with kind of everything that's been lining up to this point. But it obviously is more of a formal agreement to bring forward that engineering work. So happy to go through it if you'd like, or obviously entertain a motion to move forward.
Any specific questions from Brandon?
No, I'll move to enter into this partnership agreement with Minnesota Department of Transportation regarding engineering services for reconstruction of Highway 57.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Brandon.
Eric, so number four there, continuing on Highway 57. Obviously, we're just getting started here on the reconstruction project. We have a couple upcoming meetings. We have number A there, the citizen advisory meeting. We have assembled a citizen advisory group. Councilman Egler, Councilman Ferris are on that group, along with, is it Leanne from misplaced Magnolia? Is it Leanne?
Janine.
Janine, okay, excuse me. And then Kathy Paletta and Tim Cholssus are the kind of citizens group. We also have Stephanie from Cedar, who works for the city here, and then Charlie and Teresa, and obviously myself. So that's been the citizen advisory committee. Ultimately, we're going to be kind of running things through that citizen advisory committee before we kind of roll things out on the public's, public side of things, make sure we're on the, on the right path. That's what it's going to be ultimately, a steering committee. And then obviously, we'll have councilors represented, so we'll have, obviously, kind of discussions about the project before we bring things formally back to the city. So we're meeting tomorrow to get things kicked off. And then B there, we have our first public meeting to kick things off in a public realm, to have a presentation, quick meeting, and then an open house. And that's next Tuesday, January 29, 6:00 p.m. at the library. So please help get the word out. If we have it on social media, it's on the city website. Something's been pretty, hit pretty hard on the city website, so hopefully get a good showing. Maybe a little worried about the room we're going to have it in, but we'll see. Hopefully, get a lot, a lot of interest from the citizens. So that's kind of the first kickoff. There'll be some other meetings here as we go through. At first meeting, we're really going to look at the roadway corridor. What do we do through that corridor? We have a good opportunity all the way from County 34, the north end of the fairgrounds there to maybe change up some curb lines, change up some lane configurations, et cetera. And then also some streetscaping on what do we do with the streetscaping? Because that's something that we need to look at here, is we have a good or great opportunity to kind of start over through that corridor. So with that said, the, the second item, business and homeowners meeting. We plan on having separate meetings with them, specifically emailing all the Main Street businesses and I believe having it at a chamber of commerce or an EDA meeting. Invite them in, start talking about, obviously, they're going to be concerned about traffic and phasing and keeping downtown open, et cetera. So we will be working that through with those businesses to make sure that we're keeping Main Street as busy as we can during construction because we will be closing 57 for essentially the entire construction season. So with that said, we will have some phasing and do, do the projects in phases and obviously make it most convenient for everybody. So that's just a heads up. We have some upcoming meetings. I think that's it for reform unless you guys have any questions on where we're at and where we're going. Thank you. All right. So last item, number five there. That is a proposal for services from Hoysman Cobra Group. Myself and Teresa reached out to them. They're the same group that we worked with on the comp plan and also doing some ordinance revisions. And we worked them on a lot of other specific projects regarding some streetscaping. So ultimately, this proposal comes from, again, goes back to the comp plan. And this, this project that we have currently proposed. The comp plan basically said, Highway 57 isn't exactly the most aesthetically pleasing street. We kind of have this road that leads to our downtown. What can we do to kind of make that better aesthetically? And then also can we provide a gateway to our downtown to kind of pull people in that this is an interesting downtown? Now, as you approach from the south, you kind of go through a, kind of a commercial area, and all of a sudden, you got a railroad tracks, you got a lumberyard, and then you kind of have a downtown. You get a street light and it's kind of tight in there. So ultimately, this proposal is to kind of start looking at, looking at what can we do as part of this project? Because when we budgeted Highway 57, we put in there $110,000 line item for aesthetics. And that cost share was a 50-50 cost share for MinDOT and the city. So there's some costs that we have allocated in the project budget. And then MinDOT is also, again, picking up half that cost. So what is that? So that's what this proposal would be looking at, is what do we do here? So what we've initially kind of worked out is kind of have a base project of kind of putting all of that money, generally, we're kind of, kind of the base project from 34 up to Main Street there, and looking at potentially having a gateway with some city-owned properties, some right-of-way that we can maybe get some, some nice elements in there, streetscape elements, plantings, et cetera. So that's what this would do. Scope that out and say, all right, this is what we kind of have as the base item. Do we want to do more? Do we want to do something at the fairgrounds? Do we want to do something at the North Park? Do we want to have more streetscape elements through the residential area north of Main Street? Obviously, if we want more, that's probably not in the budget of what we have now at the $110,000. And then bring that forward to not only the, the committee meeting, the citizen advisory committee, but ultimately bring that forward to the public and see what the public says. And they may say, no, you guys are outbased. This isn't enough. We'd want to do more. Or maybe they'll say, let's just not do anything, you know, that could be a potential outcome too. And then obviously, we have to bring that back to the council for future discussion and decisions. So that's what this proposal intends to do. They do a great job of kind of laying out what it could look like with the different examples of different areas and other levels of kind of streetscaping that you can do. But obviously, if you want more, it costs more, but this is a great opportunity. And that's something that we've looked at as a, a large-scale item, up through the comp planning process. And then obviously, as we've kind of started this project, to actually pour the concrete and plant the, plant the plantings, et cetera. So what, what are we going to do? So that's really what we're trying to refine here.
Maybe to build off of that a little bit, Stephanie Lawson, our EDA coordinator, has had some really good conversations with landscape, landscape partnership folks at MinDOT. And we're looking at doing some improvement at the Highway 17, 57 interchange ahead of this project. They offer a program that's up to...
They offer a program that's up to $8,000 per year actually, so even if we scope out some streetscaping, that's more than is in the budget for the 2021 project. If we had it designed, we could move it forward with the landscape partnership in the future, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a totally lost opportunity. It may actually open up some more discussion with Mindot.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Brandon on that or Lisa? Okay. Do we, do we need to approve that Hoosmati Cobra Group proposal tonight?
I would really like to so we get things rolling.
Okay.
Yeah, well, actually I have stuff, starting to talk about things tomorrow with the citizen advisory group and then also next Tuesday, so.
Entertained a motion to approve the scope and contract.
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Motion carries. That is it. I see anything else?
Thank you very much, Brandon.
Thank you.
Personnel, number one, hired part-time police officer. This is brought back from before, so we have the letter of recommendation from the police chief. We just had interviews and he came back with Mr. Tyler Brewer for the position of part-time officer. So any questions for the police chief? Thanks for being here tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve...
I'll make that motion.
Since, it has since changed, he just got hired full-time last Thursday with the county council.
So is he not going to be?
No, he'll be able to pull some shifts, but not...
Not may shifts, you thought he would.
It's typical with part-time users, you know, they want to get their full-time, which you can understand and it's a constant.